Under order.
We're here tonight for our annual meeting devoted to our building program. Mr. Gill, take your way.
Okay, yeah, as Dr. Burns said, the reason we're here is to kind of review the annual building program and to take that step forward. During the last six to eight weeks, when we've been to health ed, budget, et cetera, the county commission, they asked that we come back with a five-year plan, kind of outline what our intentions are with respect to additions, new construction, so on and so forth. And I also explained to them that we would obviously comply with that request, but that it was, you know, physically impossible for us to give them an accurate five-year plan, given the fact that growth fluctuates so much in this county, you know, year in, year out. One year we get sixteen hundred kids, seventeen hundred, another year we may only get eight. So if we have one of those years where we get sixteen hundred kids, that would cause an immediate change in the building program. But in order to comply with what they've, the county courts requested, you know, we called this meeting and kind of laid out what we think is a decent plan. And that said, before actually displaying what we think we need to do, we, Mr. Morgan has put together some numbers, and you've got a pretty thick packet. And beginning with page one, I thought we'd just do a quick, quick summary of these, and it would show, give you a little history on what our enrollment's been. K-5 enrollment, for example, in two thousand five, two thousand six was thirteen thousand three hundred fifty-eight students. It grew by six point seven percent the next year and took it to fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-three. One point three percent in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, forty-four thirty-eight, two-one, and that reflects that. But at any rate, from two thousand five, two thousand six to this year, based on first month numbers, we're at fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-two, which is what, almost nineteen hundred more K-5 kids than we had in two thousand five, two thousand six. Now, if you flip to page two, kind of a bar graph that shows the same numbers, and it also shows you, kind of reflects the growth in those, during those years. So we've had a range from six point seven percent to one point three, and then in between there's a what, two-one, one-eight, one-point-five. The common denominator is there's always growth in Rutherford County, whether it's one-point-five or six-point-seven. Now, the next page is pretty interesting, too. Based on the average of those numbers, which I think was two-point-six-eight percent, right, Mr. Morgan? And I want to commend Mr. Morgan, he's done a really good job on this. If we had two-point-six-eight percent growth, which is the average over the past five years, by two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we would have an additional twenty-two hundred kids over what we currently have. So we'd go from fifteen-three-seven-six to seventeen thousand five hundred fifty. And the next page basically reflects the same, same information, just in a different way.
That's two more elementary schools, essentially.
It is.
Slightly more than that.
Absolutely. And here's, if you look at page five, this is pretty, pretty telling information. And I told, I told Mr. Morgan, he had done this two separate ways. This is based on a hundred percent capacity. You know, capacity is really a moving target. You know, we say we can take a thousand kids at Brown's Chapel and eight-fifty at Barfield and Blackman Elementary. That's based on the amount of rooms they have, and that's maxing out the BEP numbers, which is twenty-to-one K-3, twenty-five-to-one 4-6. So that said, at a hundred percent capacity, right now, we have roughly two-hundred-and-eighty-seven kids that are displaced. Now, when you factor in that Kittrelle does have room, Walter Hill got room, there are a lot of schools that don't have room, which is, you could, which is why we have a hundred and thirty portables in use across the county. But factoring in two-point-six-eight percent growth, we'll probably have, by the year two thousand thirteen, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight students, assuming that schools have full capacity that are, that don't have seats in elementary schools. That's in the, pardon me, that's in the Smyrna-Laverne area. We'd have three-hundred-and-eighty-three in the Blackman area that wouldn't have seats. So you've got roughly a thousand kids right there, which like Dr. Burns said, that's an elementary school right there. Now, assuming, you know, we get back to principals use creative scheduling, they find hall, they find storage areas, they convert playrooms, they do all kinds of things, which creates a little additional space. But it's pretty evident that, you know, there's going to be a need for a couple of elementary schools over the next few years, and that's reflected in our plan. We'll show you in just a second. Now, if you look, any questions so far? I thought we might come back when we went to the, when we went to the actual building plan.
Can I ask one, though?
Yes, sir.
There was a little confusion in our discussion of the middle schools with this capacity issue. You know, when the mayor ran the numbers, he was using the theoretical capacity instead of the real capacity. Have we addressed that? I mean, on this capacity, is that?
Those are-
On page five, is that what we can really put in there, or what?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what we should be able to put in there at full capacity. And that's why Barfield, for example, how many portables has Barfield got? Anybody know? They got six, six or eight, and I think Blackman's got six or eight, and they're both having enrollments at a little over nine hundred. So it all kind of equates to what we're saying, but eight-fifty would be their actual capacity, And I told Mr. Clardy, and Mr. Clardy's on the injured reserve list, he's hurt his ankle and couldn't be here, but he actually, I told him, I said, I want to know the number, obviously, your capacity is based on the number of rooms per school, and he had all that stuff, but he's not here to share it with us. But those are, are capacity at those schools. Okay. You'll see, next, we had eighty-one-hundred-and-ninety-nine middle schoolers, that's six-through-eight graders, in two thousand five, two thousand six. We have, now have nine thousand and ninety-two. And the growth there has ranged from four-point-two, two percent, to three-seven, to three-tenths of one percent, and then this year, we had five-point-seven percent growth, pardon me, yeah, we have ninety-six-hundred-and-forty-six, pardon me, middle schoolers now, the year two thousand ten versus eighty-one-hundred-and-ninety-nine, five years ago. So we picked up, what, almost fourteen-hundred-and-fifty students during the course of that time.
Wayne.
Mr. Gill, on this, excuse me, I'm sorry. It looks like the two, the oh-eight and oh-nine, where the growth was only about point-three percent. If I remember back from the numbers that we received several weeks ago, it looked like there was an aberration in Smyrna Middle, that Smyrna Middle had a large number of students and then, then dropped several, like three or four hundred, and I don't remember the-
That could have been when we moved them to Stewart Creek. Well, I think it was.
But it just seems like, I just wondered, with only a three percent growth, that, that's what stood out to me that was the biggest difference in that year.
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure. It is, it's pretty interesting, the, we grew at two-point-six-eight percent average at the elementary and three-point, what, three-point-two percent?
Three-point, yeah, three-point-one-eight.
Three-point-one-eight percent at the middle school. It's probably because we're picking up those sixth-grade city kids, which is kind of always the unknown.
Yeah, that, that was what I was going to ask. I know it is the great unknown, but I think we can make maybe some reasonable expectation that that number coming from fifth grade to sixth grade into our system, I think, is going to be a little higher than it's been. I, I, I think the success that Oakland Middle and Buchanan Middle are enjoying with lots of things, I think it's, I think many folks are going to find that more attractive than the option at the, at the city level, so those numbers probably could be up a little bit, should maybe reflect-
I think you're right.
At least let folks know that that's a good possibility.
Mr. Chairman? We also have had several private schools that opened up that, had they not, we'd have been that much more behind the eight ball. And I know that they probably took mostly from the cities, but not all of them, because I know several folks that live in the county that have gone, new cities, new private schools in the city.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, page seven is, essentially reflects the same information I just gave you, and the growth, as it says, three-tenths of one percent all the way up to five-point-seven percent. Now, looking at the next page, based on three-point-one-eight percent, we currently have ninety-six-hundred-and-forty-six, sixth-through-eighth graders. By the year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, I think it's very reasonable to expect we'll have eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine students. And obviously, we don't have that many seats, which is why we'll address building a middle school here in just a second. Page nine is, is more of the same. And page ten, using that three-point-one-eight percent growth and using the available seats in the current middle schools, by the year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we'd be seven-hundred-and-fifty-five seats that would be displaced, based on a hundred percent capacity. And like Shane pointed out, seldom do you really get a hundred percent capacity in the school. You know, you get closer probably to ninety. Does everybody understand that, the rationale behind that? You know, they don't come packaged twenty-to-one, twenty-five-to-one, or thirty-to-one, they just take them how they're packaged, so to speak. Okay. Eleven, it shows the district-wide enrollment. Two thousand five, two thousand six, we had thirty-three thousand and fifty-six students, based on the fir, end of the first month, and we are now up to thirty-eight thousand four hundred and seventeen, which is five thousand four hundred additional students over those five years. And the gross, the growth has fluctuated from five-three-five, two-one, one-eight, two-four. Now, Shane shows on the next page, potential future growth of two-point-nine-six percent based on total average over six years' time. Using those numbers, by the year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we would have forty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine students, which is six thousand students, and you can do the math with respect to schools needed, or seats needed, so on and so forth. And again, this is, you know, we'll never know how close we'll be on this, but I'd say it's not going to be too far off. Any questions on those numbers?
The last few pages are K through twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that fact, that's the last page, I guess the last two, is that factoring in any construction of new schools that it's not?
That, that two thousand eight, two thousand nine, sixth-through-eighth grade sticks out like a sore thumb with point-three percent, with all the growth on both sides of it, in the front and back. That's just, I wonder-
I don't know, I don't know what-
It, it's true, in the first month, eighty, and one fourth, and it, you'd say this over the time of everybody, this is the thing that we ended up with, and the economy is that you can tell for that year, and the area's going to stop.
It's pretty interesting to note, too, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, if we go to forty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine students, which I think, I think Rutherford County will certainly be in that area, this will be the fourth-largest system in Tennessee. It'll move, it'll ease ahead of Hamilton and Shelby County. Of course, Shelby's got two systems, Memphis City's, I had seventy, but that's how big this district's gotten.
Mr. Gill, do you know if, excuse me, with the, with the influx of the potential, possible sixth-graders from this year, did the city enrollment, did it increase, or did it, did it drop? Do we know?
Yeah, I think it dropped some. I don't know specifically what it, I did know that a month or so ago, but it's run to new stuff now, you know?
Yes, sir. I wonder if this was the first time that that dropped?
I've heard, and I don't want to misspeak, but I think what Pittard, the new Pittard School, I think they lost a couple, one or two sixth-grade classes, at least, what I'd heard, but again, I don't want to misspeak on that.
Sure.
We picked up five-hundred-and-sixty of those students this year.
From the city?
Yes, sir.
Of their sixth grade?
Yes, sir, from the sixth grade.
What did we pick up last year?
I, I want to say it was somewhere around five-hundred last year.
And we only picked five-sixty this year?
Yeah, yeah. That's what we counted so far. I mean, somebody had come in after, after I did that report, which was really helpful this year.
We've talked about second quarter numbers and, or second month numbers for, for the state and ninth month numbers, are all these, these are end of the year?
These are end of the first month.
Oh, end of the first month.
All of them, so that we'd have a, a accurate comparison.
Okay, okay.
I'm not understanding Shane's chart again, but that's not-
Okay.
Unusual. On, on page five, the projected shortfall elementary. Are you at the bottom? Bottom in that, the capacity need, we're going to need how much? How many elementary seats? Are you at?
Six-hundred-and-fifty-eight, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, in, in the Smyrna-Laverne area. Kind of just put a geographic spotlight on the big area.
In two thousand fifteen, then, we'll need fifteen-hundred-and-seventy additional seats, is that right, in elementary? Is that, is that helmet? Okay. That's what I'm confused about.
Subtract the six-fifty-eight from that thousand five number of fifteen, sixteen.
Well, you'll, no, what you're doing, you're picking up three-hundred-and-fifty more over the span of the next two years, yeah.
Well, but compared to today-
But we'll go to the schools to cover that.
Yeah, but like, for example, today, we're two-hundred-and-eighty-seven kids in that area apparently are in portable, or aren't inside the building, and that'll increase by just under four hundred over the next three years.
But in, in two thousand fifteen, it'll be just over a thousand in Smyrna-Laverne and five-hundred-and-sixty-three in the Blackman area, is that right?
Yes.
So fifteen, yeah, do nothing, fifteen, sixty-two. And then in middle school, it'll be seven-hundred-and-fifty-five, right?
Yeah, yeah, Doc.
That's two thou, but what I'm trying to understand is this, on the last page, capacity difference says twelve-thirty-four.
Yeah, that, are those the numbers you referenced earlier that we need to?
Twelve.
Well, but how would your K-twelve, his point is, how would your K-twelve be twelve-something?
You've already said that elementary's fifteen-sixty-seven, middle seven-fifty-five.
If you take the total capacity for every single one of our structures, and you take the total number of children, and you just minus that, that's what you end up with. We have a build-out of forty, forty-three thousand two hundred and fifteen, or forty-three thousand two hundred students, and the total number of students that we've got, irregardless of what level of education they're in.
So are you factoring in the two alternative schools and?
Yeah.
That may make the difference, too.
But I'm not, so I'm not sure what this last figure's telling us. In fact, to me, it looks a little misleading.
It does. I'm not sure that's right, Shane. I mean, and we're not on that last figure, and we didn't really discuss that, it's the first time I'd seen that sheet myself. But on that sheet, are we, we're not reflecting any new construction.
No.
But then it doesn't, like Dr. Burns said, it doesn't make any sense that we'd only be, only have twelve-hundred kids that were displaced, when, over here in the elementary, we got fifteen hundred. You know, we got middle and high schoolers, too.
I think what it takes into consideration on page ten is where we've got thousand-seat capacity middle schools and only four-hundred-and-seventy-three or a hundred and three, or, I'm sorry, five-hundred-and-twenty-seven students in there. And so that last page is showing the surplus in those schools and factoring that in.
That's, that's right. The total number of students that we say is capacity, that's on what we're doing right here, for all three levels of education, and irregardless of whether it's a package program or alternative school or contribution program, that all those and all the students, and give them the total percentage of growth of-
Yeah, okay. But I don't see that as being a helpful figure, because in reality, you can't do that.
Alternative school's going to fluctuate, so, you know, they're going to, they're going to start out low and-
Yeah.
So that's going to-
I'm not trying to be difficult, but I, yeah, you see, you see my question, though? Because it-
See how it could be misleading?
Great, sorry.
We're talking about bricks and mortar, and not, but they're offset by the portables, right?
None of this has anything to do with portable.
That's what I'm saying. We're talking about, so we, obviously, able, we're able to, to get by because we do have portable. That's not the best alternative, but I mean, that's what we have them do to get by. And may, maybe that we're going to have to do that more unless we get some more new buildings. So that's, that's offset, and it, it makes it look even worse, if you have to tell that.
Right.
Portables are not the best alternative, but portables are a fact of life for growing school system. You just can't get away from it. You can't, you can't anticipate adding rooms to a certain area until the kids, the students get there. And that's why this makes me a little bit hesitant, because we, demographics change in, in areas. And Mr. Gill, we have faced that before. Anticipated growth in an area, matter of fact, I think we've got an elementary school, a couple of elementary schools that we faced that with. So I think we have to be very careful in anticipating where the growth will be. It's not, I agree with Mr. Gill, based upon past history, the figures look like they'll be there, but exactly where they're going to be in zones, it's a lot more difficult to determine.
Right, exactly.
Wayne.
When we were putting this together, did you have a chance to look at the building lots that we have available throughout the county, where those are? I mean, because there, there's several plotted subdivisions out there, they just haven't ever, when we hit this, this roadblock, I just-
That, that's one of the reasons that, especially in the elementary, the way that the elementary is laid out with those circles at a particular overage, if you will.
Yes, sir.
That's why it was such a, a large area, Smyrna-Laverne area. And I, you know, of course, I highlighted the schools that that would go with, in the same way with, with the Blackman area. Realize that in those areas, those big geographic areas, that there's a need for relief, but we didn't pinpoint a particular piece of property.
Okay. Because I know that down, what, Amful Road, in that independent hill area, there's a projected, you know, very large subdivision, and, you know, I just, I-
Other, other questions or discussion before we move to the next sheet? So Harry, you want to talk about your proposed plan now?
Yeah, I do. And, and you know, I mean, I think it's, you know, there are a few schools, as Mr. Don Durian was talking about, there's, you know, Walter Hill's got a few seats, Wilson's about full, there's some at Kittrelle. I don't know if there's any, anywhere else or not. If there are, there's, there's few and far between. But I think it's pretty much understood that if we've got close to forty thousand kids right now, we grow about three percent over the next five years, we're going to pick up four or five thousand students across the county. And we're, you know, I don't want to oversimplify, but if we've got a hundred and thirty portables in use and we have five thousand kids move in, we're going to need five thousand seats to accommodate those kids. That said, and I think we also have to be, also have to be conscientious of the fact that there, there are difficult times in the, you know, with respect to the economy and, you know, in the, the school system. You know, I hate it if people view us to be a burden on the taxpayer, but I mean, it's our responsibility to make sure that kids have seats and, and parents have school buildings for their children. So I hate to be portrayed as a bad guy because we go down and ask for what we need. That said, I think we've got to be reasonable. I mean, I don't think we need to rush down and say, hey, we've got to have an elementary school in two years, we've got to open a high school in two years, we need to start breaking ground for a middle school in two years. I think we've got to do everything possible to try and stagger our projects so we're not too much of a burden on the taxpayer. And like Mr. Don Durian said, I mean, I think it's just going to be a way of life that we're going to have to use portable over the next several years. That's just going to be part of it. If we can somehow minimize the purchase of portables and keep, you know, maybe keep moving these a hundred and thirty around and get various projects going, I think we've done our, you know, due diligence there. So what, here's what we're proposing. Of course, June of two thousand eleven, which means next year, we will not have any new buildings opening up, but we would have three separate projects that would be taking place, the Capes School renovation, McFadden renovation, and also the other major capital repairs. And that's, comes out of that five cents that was dedicated to, to the county commission so that they would put that towards capital projects. Now, five cents is about two and a half million dollars. So we wouldn't be asking for anything next year, but we would be asking them to start considering borrowing for the high school. Now, in two thousand twelve, we would not open anything new, but we would do a, and again, these are our recommendations, bearing in mind all the while that we're trying to make sure that we don't go down there and ask for a hundred and ten or twenty million dollars at one, at one time. Two thousand twelve, David Urie renovation, and also the major capital repairs across the system, two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which falls into that five cents that, that is dedicated to capital projects. Following year, we would open Stewart's Creek High School. That'd be August of two thousand thirteen, and that would be somewhere in the vicinity of forty-nine million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, also, we would do the Smyrna Primary renovation, also the major capital repairs. Now, Jeff, you want to just quickly talk about what we'd have to, what the steps would be for funding that? Will we go to market? How long we can hold off?
We have the design funds covered right now by internal borrowing within the building program, but the county will go to the bond market to borrow high school money, unshared money, to reimburse that at, at a later point. So essentially, when we get into the design of the next elementary, we will already have funds in the building program to cover that design, so the county would not have to borrow in December of two thousand twelve. But, man, we might even be able to postpone it until the next fiscal year.
Would there be two separate borrowings for the high school?
Yes, sir, at least. And they, they could do three. The design money, there's a, kind of a miscellaneous refinancing that's going to be done, that should save us some money. We did some short-term borrowing, the county did some short-term borrowing. And when they take that to a longer-term borrowing, they will include the design money there. They, they could decide to do the high school in two funding streams and minimize some of the interest expense.
Okay. All right, now, to be honest, we, we really need an elementary school that same year, or perhaps even the year before, but again, I think that's too much to ask. I don't, I don't think we'd make, we'd probably be given an opportunity to make a choice, you want the elementary or the high school? And so that said, we're recommending that we get an elementary the following year. We think at this time, we're sure at this time, it ought to go into Laverne-Smyrna area. But again, three years out's a long time, and there's the potential that it could have, it, it may need to go somewhere else. We're definitely going to need an elementary that year. Also, the Eagleville High addition is in the works. We've got that in two thousand fourteen. By the way, the elementary probably be in about twenty-five million dollar ballpark and that Eagleville High Edition probably close to eleven million. Also, at some point, uh, I know this is, we hit a nerve with some folks. But if you've been to a high school football game at Laverne and Smyrna over the past many years, you've seen what a safety hazard and what a nightmare it is to find a seat down there. You're gonna have to eventually build some bleachers down there. You know, you say it's not a priority, but I know Mr. Hodges and I talked about it the other day, and Mr. Holliday may have been to a game or two. You've been down there, you've seen, and Wayne, you guys seen how dangerous it is. People literally spilling onto the track because they can't find a seat. So at some point, we're going to have to address that. Uh, and then there's some money in there for major capital repairs. If there's a year that there's not something that we have to repair, which I can't envision that happening, you know, that money could be used somewhere else. And the following year, two thousand fifteen, we're going to have to have another elementary school on the west side of Murfreesboro. Again, that's tentative, it could be that it'll have to go somewhere else. And as you recall, we had fifteen hundred additional kids that would be displaced, those two elementary schools. By two thousand fifteen, we'll take care of them. And it looks like there'll need to be a middle school in the Smyrna area somewhere, but it could be that that'll go somewhere else. We've got the Siegel High Edition that year, and we also have major capital repair money there. If I might, Dr. Burns, we got, I know two county commissioners out here, Mr. Commissioner Jeff Jordan, Jeff, I think everybody knows you, appreciate you being here. And also Rhonda Allen's here, Rhonda, thank you for coming.
Welcome. So we just need, what, two elementaries, one middle and one high school?
Yeah.
And a few additions. Okay, thanks.
So that's, that's what we're recommending, and I know you wanna look it over and probably want some justification for why there and why then. So here, we're here to try to answer any questions.
Terry.
I'll just, I'll just make a couple of comments, be quick. Back to the bleacher deal, I can contest. I went down there when Oakland played, uh, Smyrna, what, a couple of weeks ago. I guess I had the luxury of sitting on the end and, uh, the stairs going down was full of people. And I guess Mr. Aix puts those bleachers down on, on the track down there. And they had the students there and there weren't enough seats for the band. And, uh, so I mean, the way these rivalries are going, I think with all the schools, I think somewhere down the road that, uh, if we don't do something, we're gonna have a problem. But I would like to see, uh, and I know we've seen it before, see the capacity at, uh, on the Vester side of Oakland-Riverdale, uh, Saban-Blackman. At least try to get Smyrna-Laverne up to that same capacity. Granted, when they, when they play at these other schools right now, it's still not a capacity, I mean, enough capacity, but I think, uh, I think we can give them the same justice we're giving the rest of the schools. I'd like to see that. And then the other thing is, in regards to this Eagle, uh, uh, Eagle High Edition, I'd almost like to see it moved up there with Stewart's Creek, I'd try to catch both of them at the same time. It's, you know, I think we've, we did a lot of legwork on that Eagle there already.
Didn't, at least Health and Ed approved the, the Eagleville Edition, right? Am I right on that?
Yeah, I know they approved the concept of doing it, I don't know, we, they didn't specify a date.
Yeah, Wayne.
Uh, of course, I was at that meeting and, uh, it, it was, it was approved by the board and then, of course, it was approved by the Health Ed. And, uh, the way it was left at the end of the Health Ed, and, and we're fortunate to have Health Ed Chair, uh, Chair here, that it was going to move to budget in the spring to discuss funding. So I would expect since it passed us and it passed Health Ed, that the Health Ed Chairman would, would move it to budget. And hopefully, since we're talking about two separate borrowings, maybe the Eagleville and the borrowing can be, can be combined and, and then the second borrowing could happen. So I, I would, I would hope to see, to see that happen. I, I agree with Terry and, uh, it's, it's badly needed and, uh, and it's already made it, uh, down the pathway so far. I'd like to see it continue and to reverberate on what Terry said. I've been to, uh, both, uh, Smyrna games and Laverne games and games throughout the, the county. And, uh, the, uh, the overflow is, is incredible at the, uh, at the two northern campuses. And, uh, really, we dodged a couple of safety, uh, situations, I think, by, uh, you know, by having so many people crowded into such a small area and restroom facilities and concession stand facilities all being compressed. So I, I think both of those, both of those projects are well worth it and, and needed to be done also.
If I could say, I, first of all, I don't have an issue with putting Eagleville up a year. Of course, you're, but if you look at, uh, the column that reflects the dollars borrowed, the dollars needed, right now it's fifty-two million that we need and, uh, to open Stewart's Creek. Now, they'd be borrowed at different time, we had thirty-eight the following year, which included the Eagleville Edition. The reason we put it there was what you, just what I spoke of earlier, I think you understand. I mean, how much can we ask for at any one time? Without them saying, hey, we just can't do all that. But I mean, we can put it up there and I can ask. But the dilemma I get into when I get down there, a lot of times they won't say, well, we can't do it right now. And I, you know, I don't feel like I necessarily have the authority to say, well, okay, we'll put it off a year or two. We should go and get the wishes of the board. I think if you move it up there, you need to also understand that there's a, potentially they're not gonna prove it and ask us to move it back a year or two. So.
Well, explain to me as far as the, the two separate borrowings, would that, would that not help, uh, alleviate that?
Jeff is saying, no, I don't think it would.
I mean, cause are we not borrowing in two separate?
Well, I, I, I would think probably on Stewart's Creek, uh, they, they might, the second borrowing might be more for the furniture equipment and some final pieces like that. Probably within the same fiscal year even, but they, they might, depending on the outlook on interest rates, split it into two pieces. Just kind of a judgment call with our financial, we, uh, Stevens, Inc., as an investment banking firm advises us on borrowing and interest rate expectations and all. So, uh, we have discussed in the past doing, splitting the borrowing. Uh, just that possibility, I don't remember that it has been done to that degree. We, we have, we have done it upfront for design land costs. But for the rest of the project, we've, you know, it, it's tended to be the, the furnitures, fixtures, equipment, if, if that fit in the. You also have to look at the issuance costs for the bonds and all that, so.
What happened, didn't we at some time, I know Wayne, that we did a, didn't we have, uh, we had Eagle broken down into two, two phases, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can do, start on the first phase and.
And that was some of the discussion at the commission level. Initially, we had just classroom addition, didn't we?
No, the first phase included the auditorium and a set of classrooms. And then the second phase was another set of classrooms. Mr. Chairman, since we have the Health Ed Chairman here, would it be, be appropriate to, to ask him be involved in this conversation? That'd be.
If he's willing to be, I think that would be perfectly appropriate, unless there's an objection from a board member.
I was gonna suggest the same thing, so I'd object.
It'd be the last meeting he ever comes to. Jeff Jordan, please join us. And Aaron, you had, you've been very patient, you have a question before we.
Uh, just really comments, uh, again echoing the, uh, need for the bleachers at Laverne and Smyrna. In addition to the issues that have already been raised, uh, I've also had, uh, people come to me and talk about accessibility issues, uh, that the other high schools, the design of their bleachers, uh, feature ramps that allow, uh, people to, to get up into the bleachers and, and be safely seated. Now, we certainly make concession for that at the track level, you know, and allow, you know, anybody in a wheelchair, anything like that to, to set up there and be able to watch the game and everything. But with the modular design of those aluminum, uh, bleacher systems, if there were, you know, a phase in kind of thing, uh, Terry mentioned the, uh, you know, the visitor's side, you know, and the capacity not being there and the rivalries and the close proximity and everything. If there was a design that could already be put in place where some level of investment now that could expand the visitor's side and yet it could be reused in the, uh, you know, two thousand fourteen, uh, area where what we do now is kind of a Band-Aid, might take care of some accessibility issues, might get us visitor capacity, and yet it also is still usable when we do a larger project in two thousand fourteen. Uh, if we could go ahead and invest in some design, uh, time now, uh, it might serve us well.
We actually did a, I can't remember specifically what it was, but Mr. Clardy went in and some vendor gave us, uh, a kind of a design. And, uh, there'd be a, a section added on either side, on each side of the, uh, existing bleachers. We got prices on doing aluminum versus concrete. Also priced, I mean, they've got a real shortage of restroom availability or usage too for folks. I mean, it's just terrible. Got some, uh, got some prices on that and also concession stand too. So all that's probably in place. And I know what, uh, Terry was saying because, uh, Smyrna High literally carries some of those aluminum, those small aluminum portable bleachers out there and, and stacks them on each side and down the side of the, uh, the track. It's just not, you know, it's not a good thing, but, uh, you know, that's kind of putting on a Band-Aid on a big problem. But, uh, we've got, we've got considerable information already.
The other thing that I was gonna raise is i- it may just be, uh, window dressing, but the Laverne or Smyrna area elementary school, I've heard some discussion from commissioners that there's a, at least one vote out there that can come our way if there's a additional school in Laverne. I was promised an addition, an additional school in Laverne kind of thing. If, if it's gonna be an area, if we said Laverne area elementary, it may end up being in Smyrna. But in a five-year plan, if it said Laverne area elementary, it might serve to get us that one more vote.
Of course, your problem, two things here come to mind is that, first of all, you gotta find land. And for example, uh, we built Brown's Chapel. I personally would like to build it a little bit back more towards Blackman, but we couldn't find the land where we wanted it. Sometimes you gotta take it where you can get it. So that, that does dictate to a large degree where the school ends up being. But I wanna go on record saying, I don't, I never promised anybody down there they'd be, the next school would be Laverne High School. And I don't think anybody on this board did either. And, uh, the irony is when Stewart's Creek opens up, Laverne High is truly going to become the Laverne High School's school.
Right.
That's what it's going to be.
Exactly.
Uh, much like Smyrna High will become more of a Smyrna High School's school. So, you know, I'd like that commissioner to come on board and realize that what we do is in the interest of all kids in the county. And, uh, hopefully it won't become too much of a territorial issue.
Can I go back to the, uh, football thing? I know in basketball, we have had issues with, with what the fire marshal would allow us to have. I've really never thought about, is there some, because safety's been mentioned a lot. Is there, is there some point that safety says you, you just sell X number of tickets? And that's not fair to Smyrna-Laverne if, if that X number of tickets is less than what Oakland and Riverdale can do because it is revenue that they badly need. I just, I wonder if that's, that's ever been visited or thought of as to what that, what that would be.
It, it seems like it would be, although I've never heard that.
I haven't.
It's not been presented to us as an issue, but it stands to reason that it would be. I think Jeff warmed up.
And I bet Ms. Michaels will share her table with you, Jeff, if you, you're brave enough to get that much closer to us, yeah, that'd be good. You'd be heard on the microphone.
It's always good to see the board. I, I watched y'all on TV this morning, there were a lot more mad people in that meeting than tonight. Where they all gone? It, it, it will not seem, uh, silly to you that I occasionally carry minutes with me. And tonight, when I came out here, I just went back and picked up four or five meetings. We, we responded to a board request in February of, uh, this year to vote on Phase One only, so one of you mentioned two phases and that was exactly correct. And we had considerable discussion about that at the meeting, Blair was there, there were others, um, about the two phases. But your request was for Phase, Phase One. And the, the motion that was, uh, made, and there was a lot of discussion, went on for quite a while, but, um, was, um, the, the Health Education Committee endorsed Phase One of the Eagleville High School Edition, including classrooms, the auditorium and renovation of the cafeteria at a cost of approximately five point three million and forward to the Budget Committee for funding when the county goes to bond market approximately April of two thousand and eleven. And that passed unanimously. Now, the, um, the, the committee, uh, which I've been proud to chair now for about a year and a half, is, um, has three, seven members, of course, three of them are new, Mr. Commissioner Allen is, is here tonight, and I appreciate her coming tonight. Commissioner Jeff Phillips is not on the committee last year. He's an extremely, uh, able commissioner. He came back on the committee, so essentially from last year when this vote was taken, we have four new members. I bring that up just to, to make this point. That, uh, the idea behind this, as I understand it, and as we voted on, was to piggyback the funding. And I know that's, I know we can do some funding things there and, and Ms. Nolan is excellent, that sort of thing, spacing things out. But we were essentially going to piggyback the funding of the Eagleville Edition, which was for growth, excuse me, was not for growth at all. It was to take care of the portables that are there now, to renovate that horrible cafeteria that Ms. Olden has out there and to give her an auditorium and student body an auditorium so she wouldn't have to go to Union Bowl to have a play. That was the, that was the idea. I, I, it, it says in my notes at least that the, the intent was to piggyback on to Stewart's Creek High School. I think maybe, I can't remember exactly whenever, Mr., you all decided to, to go with Stewart's Creek High School, but go on the, piggyback whatever high school you approved at that time. Or if you, if, if one was not approved by the commission funding, then we would do this by itself in this coming spring. Now, um, I'm just, I'm one vote. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna support that, uh, myself, but I'm, I'm, I'm one vote. My committee might wanna rescind that. And if they do, then, then, then they do. And you might wanna withdraw your request. If you do, then we will respond appropriately. Uh, otherwise, sometime this spring, unless I'm, uh, asked to do so by you all or told to do so by committee, my committee, I'm gonna present this to budget. Now, what happened, I'm not on budget. And, uh, Commissioner Allen is not on budget. But that'll be February, March at some point. I would like to think that we would have voted a high school, Stewart's Creek, up or down by that time. I don't see a vote coming by, by my committee, which is where it has to start, Health and Ed, uh, before January. But I do see it coming. I, I think it's, I think it's, I, I think we need to decide this, this, this major project up or down fairly soon. I think you all want us to. But at any rate, that's where I stand. And I really have to go ahead to budget because I've, that's my charge from my committee. And I'll do so unless, unless they tell me different.
Well, assuming y'all do the right thing, we should vote Stewart's Creek up. Are you saying that, that Phase One would probably be part of the same borrowing?
Well, I, 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 yes, sir, I, I guess, essentially I am, yes, sir. Uh, unless, I, I won't present that way to, to budget. Now, now what they do after that is. Now, now what they do after that is, is another thing again.
So was there discussion when the second phase would come in play?
No, yes, there was, a lot of discussion. But, but I, I recall that, um, Mr. McAdoo felt particularly adamant that, that he, he really wanted to go ahead. And, and I thought that Commissioner McAdoo made a number of major points. But I, I, I thought Commissioner Goode's made a more major one, and that was that you all didn't ask us to do Phase Two. And we really couldn't do anything on Phase Two without being asked to do something on Phase Two. So we passed Phase One, which again was auditorium, cafeteria renovation. And I don't know the number of classrooms, maybe some of you remember, but I believe it was eight or ten classrooms, which was to take care of the people that are already in portable, not the ones that will come. And I, I really feel for y'all. And I notice, I, I, I see you tonight again struggling with the same thing about people that are, that we know are here and we're just reacting to, to the needs of really right now almost. And, you know, we, we, we're so busy doing that that it's just so hard to look ahead and plan and spend that money way out there in the future. But we, I mean, this is major stuff on this piece of paper.
Let me ask you a question if I could. Now, there are probably others that wanna ask something. But, uh, first of all, I wanna go on record, and I have before, and the board has, we appreciate all you've done. I mean, you're a big supporter of public education and our school building program, and bless you for doing that. That said, one of the things we've told the county commissioners that we internally fund the design, uh, through fund balance and that we would find over the next, I, I take that back. We would, we would, uh, through fund balance, come up with the money to open the school. Right, Jeff? So that would avoid any kind of tax increase there. Also, it's been said, the, Doc, uh, Mayor Burgess said he felt like debt service could absorb the cost of that high school without a tax increase. If we add five or six million, the, the Eagleville project, which I wanna do, I hope we can do, it's needed. Is that, do you think that's going to become an issue with respect to debt service absorbing that? Or would that have any kind of impact on the tax rate?
Oh, those are, those are big questions. Yes, sir.
Since I was there, one of the points that Mayor Burgess made that night was that in the spring we were gonna have some short-term borrowing revised and that this may be, could possibly be incorporated into that short-term borrowing without making a, an impact on, on the tax rate. So I don't believe it was part of a major borrowing program as much as it was gonna be added into some of the short-term debt that was not gonna have the same impact. That's what I took away from the meeting.
Ms. Nolan and, and the mayor are, almost as we speak, in, in process, they've already done some, in process of refunding some of our debt. She tells me that it'll be mid-December when she has the final savings figures that she's hoping to get. She gave me a figure, but I, I, it was for, she was hoping. So I think I'd probably just leave it at that. If, Mr. Gill, in response to your question, uh, I, I, it, of course, depends on, on when we borrow and how much we can put into this year and the following year and that kind of thing. But it is five and a half more million dollars. And I, I can't speak for the other, uh, twenty commissioners. I will say this, um, I was extremely pleased, uh, on, on the Health Ed Committee, the vote for the design plan was five-two. And, and one of those commissioners voted for it in the, in the full commission meeting. In budget, uh, I believe it was six-zero, there was a commissioner absent. And then in, um, on the commission meeting, it was seventeen-three in favor with a commissioner absent. So I, I mean, I was, uh, I, I think it, it does not say, it absolutely does not say, and I couldn't say it even if it did, that they're gonna approve, approve a high school. I, I can tell you that I'm gonna vote for it, but I, I have no idea what the, I wouldn't speculate what the other twenty commissioners will do. But I was encouraged by the vote on, on the site lands, uh, from those three groups. They're at least willing to look at this, to experiment with it, to get the ball rolling, get things going, which if I'm not mistaken, is exactly what you asked for.
Right, absolutely.
And presented so well, I might add.
I guess the point I'm trying to make with respect to this whole Eagleville deal is, uh, first of all, I, I wanna continue to emphasize I'm in favor of it. But as I told the commission, there's no doubt in my mind that if we don't have a high school opens in two thousand thirteen, we will have fifteen hundred kids in portables at Laverne, Smyrna, Blackman and Riverdale, scattered between the four schools. With in retrospect, if you moved all those kids out of portables into Stewart's Creek and didn't move another child, you'd almost have a full school full state. So I wanna make sure from my, I mean, I think this is the right thing to do. The board may see it differently. I wouldn't want the Eagleville project to derail or hurt the chances of opening that high school. I know Wayne's been passionate about getting Eagleville done, but we've got to get, I think it's crucial that we get a high school open in two thousand thirteen, or it's gonna be the biggest mess you've ever seen in all, uh, in, in education around here. And I, I wanna make sure that the board understands that, I mean, do we wanna take a position that if, if Eagleville's going to be what derails the building of that high school? I mean, do we say, okay, hey, we're willing to wait a year on Eagleville? Or do we wanna go with Eagleville and put the high school back a year if, if we're, if I'm or we're required to make a choice?
I agree. I think we need to make our position completely clear so that there's not doubt about it. Because you're right, when it gets right down to it, we, we might be asked to make a choice. We might get neither, but we might get one of the two and...
Um, if I, if I could respond to that, and I, and I agree with you exactly. Mr. Burns, uh, the, I'm, I'm just letting, unless I'm told differently, unless you withdraw that request, that, that I'm, I'm gonna do what I'm charged to do by my committee.
Right.
And, and if you withdraw that, 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 that's, whether I agree with it or not, doesn't matter. We essentially would not have voted. And, and then that will be taken care of in that fashion.
Right.
Appreciate you clearing that up for us, Commissioner.
I appreciate you all and the job that all of you do.
Anything else for Jeff?
I'd, I'd just be curious from Jeff's perspective, new to the board. So I, I view the commission and the, the school board relationship from, a little bit from more the outside. But I, but I've seen it as being a good relationship overall. I, I'd just be curious, uh, as this is laid out, and this is quite preliminary and you have not had a chance to say so forth, uh, do you think that the, the, the commissioners would, would view this as, as being a responsible request? I mean, I, I think, I think it is based upon the numbers that we have to work with. And maybe, and I, this is an unfair question, you can, so you can dodge it if you want to. But for those that may find it not to be an unfair question or request, where would they propose these kids be? I mean, are, are, are they comfortable with these kids being in, in portables or wherever they happen to be?
See, I can dodge that one, I have an option.
Yeah, you can, you're welcome.
I, I think in, in general, I, I think first of all that this would be, I'm not sure of the order. But I, I, I think this is a responsible request in general. And if you, if you move some things around or whatever, I think that, that, that would be fine. I, I agree with you about the relationship, which has been, I think, very good between the commission and consistently improving over the last ten years perhaps. And there, there is an element which, of, of, of trust here, which, uh, had, has a lot to do with Mr. Gill. And in all fairness, a great deal to do with Mr. Watson as well, uh, between the commission and majority of the commission and, and the school board, the majority of the school board. I, I think the relationship is, is frankly, pretty good. I will agree that, um, if you, if you are just not completely into this education thing, and it's, it's, it's difficult to imagine, and I'll use him as an example. It, it, it's difficult to imagine what Mr. Ash goes through when he's got people eating lunch in cafeteria, on picnic tables in the upstairs gym at Laverne High School because he simply can't feed all of them. There's just no physical way. And I know that building, and Mr. Tackett does too. And I've been through that, I've been through all that. And it's, 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 it's not as secure and as safe as we would like for it to be. And I think, well, you don't have to look at that. And when, when you don't experience it, I think it's a little bit, well, they'll get by. You know, they can do that, but I think that's a minority of the commission. I'm, I'm almost certain that it is.
Terry.
I'll just make another comment in regards to this. You know, looking at this, uh, this Stewart's Creek High School, I don't, I don't see any way that we really can, really can delay the opening of the high school. I mean, it's gonna have a, this can provide us the biggest impact, uh, the biggest impact of anything we got as far as relief goes. And I know, read an article in the paper here last month about one of the commissioners thought, you know, we ought to add on to Smyrna High School and all that stuff. You know, the problem you run into there is, I know we discussed it before, you don't have the core capacity to even do it. Secondly, you get your student population up to three thousand people, and, and here we go with the, we're talking about these bleachers for stadium and all that, you know, we're gonna add on to the stadiums. But I don't think that's a solution. And, uh, you know, I just, uh, you know, if we're gonna do something, I, I think the, the high school, we definitely need to take care of that. If we put this Eagleville Phase One that we've already approved, whatever, put it with it and just move forward.
Aaron. The only other alternative to consider, and I'm not saying it's a good idea, but is, is there a phasing, uh, ability with the construction of Stewart's Creek High School? Um, I know we've talked about that already and it, and it, you know, it's really not there. But when we're talking about it in terms of versus Eagleville Phase One, is there any part of Stewart's Creek construction that's five million dollars that we can say, well, we can make that a Phase Two of Stewart's Creek High construction? I don't see where it is because there's cost of, you know, you know, you're there with the construction and everything. To come back in a Phase Two makes that more expensive when you have to do it in two phases. But just so we've said, yeah, we looked at every possible alternative before we, you know, say that Stewart's Creek is a first and Eagleville Phase One is secondary. So Health Ed, please consider it that way and help us move forward.
Personally don't know, I mean, I don't know what Phase Two of Stewart's Creek High could be unless it were the stadiums or something. And I, I don't see how you can get by without your stadiums. I mean, they're such a vital part of the educational community. And as you say, once the crews are mobilized, you know, and once they bid on the project, that bid's only good for so long. So you'd almost have to go back out for a rebid. I don't, I don't know of anything you could do personally. I mean, I would suggest that we move Eagleville Phase One back up where it kinda is. I mean, before you recommend that to your committee this spring pursuant to what we've already done, we'll probably know the future of the high school.
I would hope so, yes.
Yeah. And I mean, if they say, hey, we can't do it because of the high school, uh, you know, so be it. But there may, there may be an opportunity, they may say, hey, we can do this, we can get it started. We do it all part of one borrowing and, and we perceive that way. But I, I just think it's, it's really risky to, if we don't get this high school going.
Well, as, as Mr. Sandvik is aware, and, and, and Mr. Gill, you're almost always there at Health Ed as well. Ms. Nolan is going to discuss, uh, the, the borrowing and some, in her case at least, some very intelligent information and guessing about funding next year with, at our November meeting. Her figures will be more, uh, more rock solid in December. And of course, any member of the Health Ed Committee can make a motion at any time, just like in this room. But I don't expect any vote on the high school until, until the December or January. But I don't, I don't really know that. I'm not gonna ask for one, I'm not. But, uh, you know, if, if they wanna vote, I guess we can vote. But I, I, we have asked and you all have responded with, with considerable amount of information. This is twice he's really responded with some additional information. And they've asked Ms. Nolan the same thing, which is why she is, uh, has, she doesn't usually come to Health Ed, but she's coming this next time. So I think it's all an information gathering thing, and I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that we can get a vote. I'm hoping for January, quite frankly. I'm, I'm gonna ask for one. I mean, I get one, but I'm gonna ask for one.
Yeah, Terry.
Go ahead, Mark.
No. Can I ask if there are any other questions or comments for Jeff? You're welcome to stay right there, or you're welcome to...
Oh, I'll, I'll get back over there where I feel safe.
Thank you very much, Jeff, for coming.
Thanks, Tom, y'all.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
Is there any reason to, I'm sorry, is there any reason to continue to prioritize among these other projects? The Smyrna primary renovation, the, uh, you know, we, we've talked about the Eagleville High addition. But, you know, do we, do we rate between the, the Smyrna primary renovation and the Eagleville High addition as we talk about what goes into a fiscal thirteen, fourteen versus what goes into fourteen, fifteen?
We, typically, we've done our building program about on a two-year, two-year basis because it's so, it's just so hard to hit it five years out.
Right.
But, you know, this is a request the commission made and we tried to put something together. And we do have an order, a working order on renovations and, uh, that Mr. Clardy has done, Jeff?
And that renovation comes out of that five cents of property tax.
Yeah.
So it's not...
That's no borrowed money, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
You know what, if, if you don't mind, I think the board would, would benefit from this and, and I, I too would, kind of get me thinking, again, I suspect the commissioners would. So much of our money for school construction, it comes from local revenue. Can you talk, Jeff, for real quick about how much money the state puts into new building construction? You, can you got that at your eye? Just, I mean, ballpark it for me.
There is a, the BEP funding source. It, that formula comes up with a local minimum to be, and then you've got your state portion. That state portion is our biggest individual revenue source. I'm, I'm wanting to say in the hundred and fifty million dollar range this year, but I haven't looked at it in a month or so. And there is a capital construction component in that. We have always used that for operations and, uh...
So if we build a fifty million dollar Stewart's Creek High School?
Right.
Is, is there any way to get to the bottom line on what the state will ultimately pay on that?
Ultimately, we pay for that out of local revenue through borrowed funds. We have on occasion been able to use some of what we have built in fund balance towards, say, land or some design fees, but that's been relatively small in the overall picture. And we have already made commitments to be using that toward funding the operations.
Tim. Just, maybe just a little bit off tangent, but just for the purpose of, of the whole thing, if we took a big circle and, and cut it up into federal, state and local monies, about what would those percentages of pie look like?
Well, the GPS budget this year is a little over two hundred and fifty million. Not much of that is federal at all anymore. Then the, our various federal projects, not all of which will be used this year, because some of them are multi-year projects that can be carried over. That is probably in the, close to thirty million. And then in the cafeteria program, we will have s- five to seven million that is federal money that goes in there. So it's, it's a pretty broad mix, and it's spread across funds. But in the GPS budget, really, the ROTC reimbursement and some other minor programs are the only thing we have left that's federal there.
So no child left behind when it funded...
In, in the federal funds.
Are you saying that, that, that there's less of that now than originally?
No, no, not less, just it's in a separate fund, so I, I don't have an overall pie. But it, it's a pie twenty millions out of, and then we have in, the GPS is another two hundred and fifty million. So in operating funds, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty-five, two hundred and ninety million dollars in total. And so thirty-five, thirty-eight million of that is federal. Very approximate.
Wayne.
Not that you don't already have plenty to do, but maybe you could email us a Finance 101, breaking down how we are funded with sales tax and, and, uh, from the general, the big general fund, uh, license permit.
I, I can send you what, in, in the budget packet, I can, I can send you that information.
But I mean, explain things like, you know, our, our tax rate is nine point seven five, and then seven percent goes to the state, and then two point seven five.
That would take a while, but I, you know.
But I'm just, you know, maybe a general.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I would be, if you did more, just round numbers, not anything exact. I mean, you, you can take a stab at it that I can't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or more educated stab. I could stab. Just not very educated.
Other questions for Jeff?
I was gonna make one comment. Of course, the local economy, which we never know for sure what's gonna happen. Obviously, we've been blessed with continued growth, uh, sales tax and things of that nature. But if it were to take a downturn, then, you know, it would certainly substantially make a difference too. And so, uh, that's something we hope that we continue to, to prosper. If it, if it doesn't, you know, of course, we anticipate and we, we're doing the right thing. And it's, it's obviously a good community and people continue to move here because of past funding and past opportunities. And, um, but, you know, if it went, went south, you know, it would, it would have some impact too. So I, I don't know, a lot of times the county commission, being a former member, there's always some folks there that look at, look at it from pessimistic standpoint, that we, we're doing good, but we may be on borrowed time. So we hope that maybe that, that won't interfere with a possible positive vote on this.
Donald.
This, of course, with Mr. Clardy not here, Mr. Gill, it makes it difficult. But, uh, this fifty million dollars, uh, is, is that his estimate of what it's gonna cost based upon square footage and everything?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, you know, we, we got scolded and might be a little strong, but time or two, we came under the estimate. So we make sure that we're, you know, we give ourselves a little wiggle room there. Hopefully, it'll come in a little less than that, but not much. It should be pretty close.
I, I was hoping, since we already had the land, we, you know, we were very proud of that fact at one time.
Hasn't, I, I think it was stated in a fairly recent board meeting that compared to other systems that have built out similar schools, that, that our numbers have come, are very favorable as compared to other systems and what they're, what they're paying for theirs. And I certainly, that's part of the question I was asking with Jeff. You know, when you talk about that trust relationship between the two boards, is there, is there a feeling that what we, what the board has done in building schools, has that been, in the past, has it been a reasonable?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Figure, has it been, have we built? Schools that, that are as, as nice and comfortable and functional as the commission would like to see them without going overboard with the, the process. I think that's, that's very important to, that, uh, that they see it that way. You know, if they do, that makes it much easier to sell at this time.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good point. Actually, uh, either Dr. Warren or, or Mr. Jordan had asked us to do presentations. We've gone there, uh, given us some square footage comparisons with other counties, talked about the things we've done, to change the design of the building and eliminated some things that we didn't need and, uh, made the building a little more functional, cheaper to build. And I, I think they're aware of that. And we've, we've spent considerable time trying to find, find ways to cut costs. So kinda pleased with that, proud of that.
Is it appropriate in this meeting, as, as our conversation and discussion is drawing to a close, do we need a motion and a vote, uh, this evening that prioritizes and, uh, and puts that, that, uh, the Stewart's Creek High School ahead of the Eagleville Phase One?
Well, that's a, sorry. I mean, whatever the board decides on that, I mean, I, I guess that would be ideal. But on the other hand, we haven't seen this before. Might need some time to chew it over. So I, I need some guidance.
I think we, we have a good plan as it is now. I, I would, I would hate to, to change it, uh, at this point because, uh, half of Eagleville's high school i- is, is outside. They're the only middle school high school that, uh, does not have an auditorium. And I believe they're the only, uh, middle school high school that hasn't had a renovated cafeteria and lunchroom. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, that with, uh, the way the mayor had, uh, proposed funding, that we're, we're looking at two different funding options here. One with the short-term debt and one with the, uh, with, with a major capital borrowing for, for a new high school. So, uh, I, I don't, I don't wanna do something tonight that would deprive, uh, the Eagleville, uh, community and especially students of, of something that looks like it's, it's, it's flowing nicely because it, again, it's passed this board. It, it, it went through unanimously through the Health Ed and would like to see it go to budget.
The only thing I'd say, and I, I agree, but I, I wanna caution you against, if, if I'm put on the spot down there and saying, hey, we can't do both, do you, I mean.
I still think.
I want some.
We need to reiterate what our top priority is.
Yeah.
Particularly in the light of a commissioner who wrote a article in the paper with a variety of ideas, which I'm sure we all read that with some interest. I think that's what you're getting at here, isn't it?
Well, I, I guess.
You want us to be clear about what our top priority is.
I mean, because as I say, sometimes I get asked down there, say, well, you know, what if this, what if that? And I mean, I wanna be able to, I mean, you want me to say, hey, we gotta have this high school, that's our number one priority. But we also want Eagleville at the same time. But as I say, you can't have both. Are you, do you wanna go ahead with the high school first? Do you wanna go with Eagleville first? I mean, and that could happen.
Right. Donald.
As I think about this, uh, we only have two things there. One is the high school and one is Eagle. You know, we're, nothing else on this list is there. They're not, they're not ready to consider. You're going to consider the high school in December or January at the latest. We already have the Eagleville on, online. That would, we have until February to withdraw that if it comes to that, is my understanding. So at this time, I, you know, I would tend to say, let's let this thing play out to see and then let's make a decision. I, I wouldn't want to, uh, I wouldn't want to jeopardize either one of the projects. But, uh, as I listened to, uh, Commissioner, I thought, uh, I thought he was giving us a little bit of time to make that decision on what we wanted to do with it. And so I, I'd like to, I'd like to wait until we see what direction they're going. And this, uh, another thing that, uh, what Terry was talking about there, about those bleachers, uh, that's, that's something that if we were going to prioritize, and I know you're, it's hard to imagine, Mr. Gill, it's coming from me to talk about spending money. But, uh, you know, that, that is something that's, that's going to have to be taken care of. And if we're, another student enrolls or not, that's a problem now.
Absolutely. Now, and I agree with what you said, which is why I brought it up to Commissioner Jordan, that we may know if we got a high school before it ever gets to the Eagleville deal, which both may play out. But I, I've, I've been down there many times over the course of the last eight years. And occasionally, they'll ask, and they may in January, say, now, you got this Eagleville deal in the hopper. We can't do both. What's the wishes of the board, is my only point. If we, if, if, if I'm sitting down there and they, they bring that up, and I say, well, the wish of the board is we do both. And they say, well, you don't get both. What do you want? And I, you know, I'm probably, hopefully won't get asked that, but I, those things do happen, don't they, Commissioner? So.
Terry.
Uh, just looking at this thing here, I don't know if Mr. Gill has to take this to the commission or not. Since that Phase One's already been presented and everything, now this total, what, eleven million dollars? Basically, uh, possibly move it off at thirty-eight and put it up there with the, that fifty-two, if you're gonna give them some accurate figures. You know, in, in the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, you know, you're looking at fifty-seven, two. And, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, you're looking at thirty-three, four. So that'd be on, if it, if they, if they need something to say, if that's already been put in the hopper, you know, at Phase One.
Well, given what Commissioner Jordan said, it might need to be bumped all the way up to two thousand. Where would it need to go with, Jeff? The first phase. And when's the second phase come into play?
I don't, I don't know if we can get it to something. We can move it up a year. I don't know that we can move it up any more than that.
So in retrospect, we'd be moving it to two thousand thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Twelve thirteen or thirteen fourteen?
Open in August of twenty thirteen.
So it would be on the same time schedule as Stewart's Creek?
I don't think we can move it up any faster than that at this point.
Yeah. Well, let's do that. Let's put it up there. When, when.
This goes, as requested to the board, or to the commission, I should say, does it come from the director of schools or does it?
No, it comes from the board.
The board.
Yeah.
So.
But it'll also come with the understanding that, hey, there could be needed changes.
I just ask for clarification. I mean, this board meets next week. I mean, I certainly, I'm certainly not in favor of making any type of vote on that tonight. We've got, unless Jeff says we, he needs to take it out of here this evening, I think we need to wait till at least, at least next week and, and have time to stew on this and study on it, talk about it and, and then put it in whatever form of motion we need to do come next Thursday night's board meeting at the, at the earliest.
Okay. We just put it on there, Mr. Michaels, as it makes sense.
Is that okay with everybody? Anyone object to that?
But I think that Terry's, uh, modifications there, I think that's the appropriate way for us to present it. With Eagleville already having passed Health and Ed, um, you know, let's, let's put it in there in that timeframe and get what we can.
Yeah, we'll make it change.
I still worry that we've not answered your question, Terry.
If you don't answer it, I'll just.
Well, that, well.
Well, I, I.
I'm sure you'd be glad to answer it.
I'll speak, I mean, I'll speak to it. I mean, I, you know, it may be, it may, may be my experience being in a school that had twenty-four hundred students at it one time when it was designed for, for nineteen hundred. And, you know, when you talk about, unless you've been there, you don't know what that's like. I mean, that's, we just can't, we can't do anything to jeopardize that situation coming up again. Uh, you know, and I, and I want the folks, good folks at Eagle to have everything that they, that they need and deserve and have deserved in the past and so forth. But, uh, I, I just think we've got, that's got to be priority one. Do not put ourselves in a situation, we've got a high school with twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred students in it.
And I would certainly agree with that. I mean, if we have to choose, for me, the high school is a clear priority. But I don't know that we need a formal vote on that, but.
Well, hopefully, we don't have to tip our hand, do we? Hopefully, that point's very clearly been made.
Yeah, it might. So this will be on next Thursday's agenda?
So next Thursday, we're just, we're going to, we're gonna rehash this or we're basically saying that the change is that, that Eagleville will, uh, their new addition would open at the same time as?
Well, I, I hear, I, yeah, we move it up to two thousand thirteen, but apparently that's Phase One. I don't know when Phase Two.
Well, I don't know that we ever.
I don't think we did.
We, Phase Two was, was talked about, but I don't think it was ever.
Okay. So Phase One was in the, between the five and six million dollar?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we'll, obviously, we'll have a dis, opportunity to discuss it further if we want to, to amend it. Whatever action we want.
Discuss it in, in next Tuesday's planning session and have that knocked around and hopefully have a, 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 that discussion out of the way for Thursday night's board meeting, I would hope.
Right.
With us not opening anything in this, in that, in that year, what impact will that have on, on debt service? I mean, that will give, will, will that, will that, that, will that be a positive? That should be a positive impact on debt service.
Moving Eagleville up?
Well, no, just not moving it up to where it already is. It's already.
And I, I don't know what Ms. Nolan has built into her own projections. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Check, check, see, fine, check on that, Jeff, if you can.
There'll be two years when we don't open anything. That's what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
You should give them a bit of a break.
Right. And, and, and again, it's, it's less, the actual first phase is less than what's projected here because that was the only thing that was approved.
Okay, further discussion.
Just one last thing. Uh, next week, if, if Mr. Clardy could get that information on those Smyrna Laverne, bleachers and bathrooms and all that.
Sure.
You know, I, I probably got, still got mine, but the new board members could probably use it to, just, you know, for discussion if nothing.
We'll bring it to the next board meeting.
That might be one we wanna move up.
Dr. Burns and I think, uh, uh, Mr. Hodge both talked about the column in the paper. I, I think the good thing about these kind of meetings being on TV is that people think that, see that we explore all kinds of ideas and alternatives. And over the course of the last several years, I know Mr. J, uh, Mr. Donald Jernigan kind of always encouraged us to add classrooms and, you know, it's cheaper than building new buildings. We've done, we, a lot of the things discussed in that column, we talked about, you know, everything from two-story buildings to expanding schools, uh, in many things, adding on to single high school. But the board explores almost every feasible option with respect to finding a place for kids to go to school. And I like Terry, I think it was Terry said a few minutes ago, about, I hope we don't ever reach the day where we have three, three thousand kids in a high school and, uh, tax the, uh, the court to the point where people can't get in the libraries and they can't find time for lunches. So, I mean, I think the board's done a good job over the past several years of building, you know, of having, putting together a good building program. Tim?
Uh, another point to, to, to one of the articles, and I don't know which one you might specific, but the, the idea of, of taking some students from this school and moving to this school and some students to this school, the rezoning of, of, of that, uh, would create, I mean, irregardless of how much issue it would have for us to, to make those decisions, the, uh, the families, the many, many families that would be displaced by that would, would be just, uh, a, a total nightmare.
It's a lot easier in theory than it is.
Well, it's just, it's just not.
Well, most of us have been.
The, the public, ultimately, the public decides what is good and bad. And, and the public's just not going, at this point in time, accept that much rezoning and change. Let's just pick up, let's just pick up two hundred and fifty students and move them from this school to that school. It's just, we can do it. But, uh,
Yeah.
I think you guys that have been on this thing longer than me recognize that that's not, that's not an acceptable practice. It comes right down to it.
That's another re, another viable reason to add classrooms to existing schools. You do not have to change zones.
Exactly.
But if I, am I oversimplifying this thing in my mind? If we take six million dollars for the Phase One off of the thirty-eight million, add it to the fifty-two million, that's, that's basically all we're doing, is what we're talking about. I mean, in the commission. We're, we're not making this thing that hard. I mean, it's two, two phases for the high school and we're talking about one phase going up. And that's what Mr. Gill's talking about there.
Right.
If they say, we like the fifty-two million, we don't like the fifty-eight million, then what are you gonna do?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll do that. And the, the last thing, I wanna make sure, uh, on this, uh, the wrestling at the, uh, Blackman Middle School. First of all, I was glad to see the mats back. I'm glad they're back to wrestling. I think we all are. Hate that whole thing happened. Also, equally happily, we didn't have any, any role in all that that went on. But I, I will say this. We met, uh, last week with, uh, president of that organization, uh, they used to be called the Sharpshooter. I think now they're the Rutherford Wrestling Club or something, and also, uh, Mr. Kennedy. And, uh, I told him that, you know, we wanted him to continue. And, uh, I told them that, you know, we wanted them to continue, I, but we needed one proof of insurance, which they provided immediately. Also, I told them that, while I didn't have the authority to let them wrestle, that the board had to approve facilities used. I contacted one or two of y'all and said, go ahead and let them, you know, they've already been through enough, and they are, they are wrestling. And now, we've given them a deadline, that's been a week and a half now, to submit the use of facilities for them. And they still haven't gotten it in, and Mr. McLeod called today, and Will, Will Shelton, Principal Blackman Middle, took a form to Officer Kennedy, or Mr. Kennedy, told them that we need that form in so that the board could approve use of facilities. And it's apparently not been a priority to get that form into us. And I just wanna go on record saying, if they don't have it, as far as I'm concerned, I've given them more than ample opportunity to get that in. If they don't have it in by our drop-dead deadline for approval, then they're not gonna be able to use that facility unless you guys wanna, uh, make a further exception of the rule, which I don't think we should. I mean, there's, comes some responsibility with, you know, using that building, so, uh, you know, if you watch this on TV and you're affiliated with that group, get that form in so we can approve it, let you use it. Otherwise, uh, there's gonna be a span of one board meeting to the next where they can't use it. Everybody with me on that, understand?
Terry.
They, they have to have it in, what, by Friday, Thursday?
It's supposed to be in by Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Today. She gave them until tomorrow.
I think we, we started and actually hand-delivered the form and asked them a good week ago.
Correct.
I don't want.
Puzzling. Any further business? Yeah, Wayne.
We'd like to commend, uh, Mr. Gill for, uh, and Mayor Burgess for conceding in that and getting that worked out, because I think we all got several calls and emails concerning it, so, thank you, Mr. Gill, for doing that. Uh, I don't know if this is the time and the place, but I'd like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Hodge for earning the, uh, Master School Board designation, and a lot of work and, uh, a lot of involvement. And, uh, congratulations for first Rutherford County Board Member to get that, uh, accomplished, so congratulations.
All right. We certainly agree with that, and we are, we are gonna do something during next week's meetings, I'm not quite sure what. Some sort of hazing, I think.
I think we need a former line, let it run through the tunnel or something, you know?
The gauntlet.
All right, where are you, John?
Right over Randy Moss, he can run it all.